And welcome to the December 11th meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. Please join us now in the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by Maureen Rafter, a fifth grade student at Williamsport Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maureen, would you like to introduce any special guests that you have here today?
I would like to introduce my mom. My mom is Michelle Rafter.
This is Mrs. Palmer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I should point out that Mrs. Rafter is a teacher and she's enjoying some time here with her daughter today. Mrs. Palmer is supporting from behind. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been approved and seconded.
Mr. Superintendent, I wish to amend the agenda to add an item seven under new business entitled quasi judicial proceeding.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved. All in favor of amending the agenda as proposed, please signify by raising your hand. The agenda has been modified to have new item number seven under new business. Requesting approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent.
Superintendent, we need to vote on the original.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could we then have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Is that correct?
Motion's on the table.
Motion is on the table.
We just need to vote.
We need to vote. I don't get to do this very often. I'm either trying to prolong it or I don't know what I'm doing. I'm not sure where. All in favor of the motion as it's on the table, please raise your hand. We have an agenda. Thank you very much. I'm nervous now. The approval of the minutes, please.
Superintendent, I'd like to move for the adoption of minutes from the closed session meeting that was held on Tuesday, November 20th, and the minutes from a business meeting held on the same date.
Do I have a second?
Move for approval.
Do I have a second? All in favor of the approval of the minutes? The minutes have been passed. This brings us to the reason the superintendent is actually convening this meeting. We have a special board action, which is the Board of Education's reorganization. First, we will accept nominations for the election of the president of the Washington County School Board.
Mr. Superintendent, it's my honor to nominate for president Dr. Johnson-Hardings.
Do I have a second for the nomination of Dr. Harding?
I'll second.
Seconded. Are there? Yes.
I would like to nominate Donna Brightman for president of the board.
Is there a second?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. We have two nominations for the board. Are there any other nominations?
Superintendent, I move for the nominations to be closed.
Is there? May I? I've got to make sure.
I second.
There is a second.
Second.
So let's vote on closing the nominations right now with Dr. Harding and Mrs. Brightman as nominations for president. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The nominations are now closed. We'll move to the main motion, which is the vote on the president. All those in favor of Dr. Harding, please raise your right hand. I see four affirming that. Those voting for Mrs. Brightman, please signify by raising your right hand. I see three. Congratulations, Dr. Harding. You are the president of the Washington County School Board by a vote of four-three. The next item of business is the, in the reorganization, is the election of the vice president of the board. Nominations are now open for the position of vice president of the Washington County School Board.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Mr. Paul Bailey as vice president, to be vice president of the board for the upcoming year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Harding. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the chair will close nominations and ask for a vote affirming the nomination of Mr. Bailey to the position of vice president. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? Mr. Bailey is elected four-three. Congratulations, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I turn this meeting over to you for the next item on the agenda, which is a recognition of our state champion athletes.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. The next item on the agenda is recognition of state champion athletes. Dr. Wilcox?
It's my pleasure today to welcome and honor more than 100 Washington County Public School athletes who are privileged to call themselves state champions. While we are incredibly proud of our students for both academic and extracurricular activities or accomplishments, these student athletes are worthy of individual praise for their efforts as well. Today, we will formally recognize the North Hagerstown High School, Smithsburg High School, and Williamsport High School volleyball teams, the Clear Spring High School and Hancock High School Unified Tennis Teams, and the Boonsboro High School Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams for being named 2012 Maryland State Champions. I would ask the board members who would like to participate in the recognition to come forward. President Harding's, on your desk are some certificates that I believe Mr. Reidenhour will hand out. They should be in order, and so we'll begin first with the Hancock Unified Tennis Team.
First, we'd like to recognize Nick Tostin. Nick, would you come forward? Followed by Jordan Tostin, Kyle Kearns, Tommy Golden, Kayla Kearns, and Tiffany Hensley. Head coach for the Unified Tennis Team is Harry Lane-Hardley. Harry, thank you. Next, we will be recognizing the Clear Spring Unified Tennis Team Division One Champions. First, Sammy Banzoff, Hannah Bambrach, Dan Cheek, RJ Conway, Abby Kotro, Jansen Forsythe, Tanner Graham, Garrett Jacoby, Katsy Kingsley, Caitlin Klein, Courtney May, Savannah Mills, Holly Reese, JR Wilborn, the manager, Richard McPherson, head coach, Aaron Waddell, and Congratulations to the Clear Spring Unified Tennis Division One Champions. Next, I'd like to recognize a group of cross-country runners, our 1A state champions from Boonsboro High School. We'll begin with the boys team first. Ethan Alnit. I'm sorry, Ethan.
Alnit.
Alnit. Now you've got it said twice. Michael Bayer, Ethan Conley, Ryan Curtis, Cade DeCalo, Dylan Dennig, Josh Ford, Ben Harrow, Zach Hall, Mark Johnson, Nathan Johnson, Tom Kirsten, Michael Lacy, Brian Letendre, Randy Lowman, Colin Mannix, Paul Roachford, Grant Sherwood, Chris Snyder, Sean Snyder, Otto Solberg, Wyatt Stitley, Josh Testa, Alex Thaggert, Brandon Turnbaugh, Nick Zalinski, and head coach Becky Walter, assistant coaches Sean Cutzel and Aaron Kelly. Board members, I'd also like to point out to you that the team GPA for this group of cross-country state champions is 3.52. These are truly scholar athletes. Next, we'd like to recognize the Boonsboro High Cross Country 1A Champion Girls Team. Lexie Bain, Kirsten Colter, Courtney Cunningham, Jamie DiAmbros, Alexi Doak, Kelsey Eichelberger, Megan Eichelberger, Marley Enfield, Hollis Griegus, Ella Hawkins, Abby Jones, Alec Kimball, Mariana Ligon, Tyler Mazzalone, Jenny Moore, Nisha Paul, Emily Ross, Sam Smith, Anna Solberg, Allison Wallace, Sarah Zalinski. This group is coached by Becky Walter. The assistant coaches, Shan Cutzel and Aaron Kelly. The team GPA for this group of young women is 3.91. Next, we're going to introduce the 2A Champions, Williamsburg High School in varsity volleyball. And we will begin with Alexandria Nunnely, Alexandria, Alexis Klein, Brooklyn Welch, Courtney Malat, Haley Woof, Mary Beth Rate, Megan Murray, Emily Taylor, Carly Grimes, Lindsay Mobry, Alexis Evans, and Stacy Christie. They're coached by Emily Crabtree, assistant coach Karen Moyer. Their statistician was Ashley Plume, and the team manager was Emily Fitzgerald. These young girls had a team GPA of 3.54, our 2A champ. I should also note that this team hosted several conference champions as well as M-VL champions. First team was Stacy Christie, Courtney Malat, and I did that wrong. Stacy Christie, Courtney Malat, and Emily Taylor. Our next group is from North Hagerstown High School. They are 3A state champions, and this is their second championship in a row. Number one, Emily Falk, Lauren Sarafini, Tana McKenzie, Jessica Wyble, Christine Randall, Michaela Moody, Alexis McCarthy, Peyton Wallack, Sarah Bentley, Calaya Frost, Zoe Schreiber. Team managers are Matty Pokovitz, Emma Moss, and Reed Wallack. The head coach is Megan Crawford, and she's assisted by Katie Eck. The team GPA here is 3.61. Next, I'd like to introduce the Smithsburg High School Volleyball State Champions, Class 1A. This is their fourth consecutive state championship. Holly Wenders, Elena Black, Megan Moran, Peyton Bella, Marissa Dangler, Sarah Heatherington, Jenny Fritz, Lucinda Nehmias, Jessica Sensenbaum, Lexie Poffenberger, Amanda Snowden, Randy Ladig, Jordan Smith, Emily Seaworth, Haley Cottrell. The managers are Matty Mazenko and Megan Davis. Head coach is Rachel Bershur. Assistant coaches Rose Powell, Bill Haas, Kelly Cobb, and Caleb Martin. And this four-time state champion has a GPA cumulatively of 3.66. Our congratulations to all of you. To all of you who I mispronounced your name, my apologies, but state champions still. Thank you.
If any of the board members would care to offer any comments for our athletes, please.
Dr. Orings, yes, thank you. Just one quick comment. You know, we always, there are several common denominators for state championship teams. One of them, obviously, is some outstanding student athletes. The other is, and I think across the board here, I think I see it, just outstanding, dedicated, knowledgeable, competent, beyond imagination coaches. The head coaches and assistant coaches of those teams are exceptional, and we should be very proud of them. Thank you.
Just one comment. You know, oftentimes in the applause, it is lost that these truly are student athletes. When we talk about their GPA, I will tell you that as I've talked to the principals across this district, particularly those who now have state championship teams, one of the things they say is that these girls are not only leaders, and these young men are not only leaders on the court or on the running track, but they are also leaders in their schools. And so we don't want to lose sight of the fact that these young people really are a cut above. We thank them very much for all of their effort and dedication, but none of them would be where they are today without parents who care deeply about them and were committed to their success both in and out of school. So I want to thank the parents of each of the young people who walked across this stage. We know that families come in all different shapes and sizes. We know that some of these young people are being raised by grandparents, and we thank them for what they're doing. We also know that some of the kids come from, you know, really challenging circumstances. We thank them for persevering. And so again, this is just really, I think, a great day for the school system, not because we get to recognize state championships, but because we get to recognize great kids who are succeeding beyond our wildest expectations. So thank you, board, for taking the time to recognize these young people.
Any other board members who care to offer any comments? Okay. There's nobody who's signed up to speak during public comment. Are there any members of the audience who wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to old business. There's no old business, so new business. The first item is the consideration of the first reading of policy FEI and the rescission of policies ECE, EDD, EEAG, EH, EGC, EFE, GBL, and JO. That's a mouthful. Mr. Trotta, Mr. Michael.
Good afternoon, President Harding's, board members, and Dr. Wilcox. As just indicated, we're here today to present the first read of policy FEI. It is a policy that pertains to record retention and disposition. The policy committee met on November 27th and reviewed not only this document, made some minor changes to it, but also reviewed the other list that Dr. Harding's just read and is requesting that the board consider rescinding those other documents in that that information will be redundant with policy FEI. So at this time, we'd request that you're considering, for your consideration, the first read of FEI, and we're here to respond to any questions as well as the policy committee members. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the first read of policy FEI and the rescission of the stated policies?
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of policy FEI and the rescission of policies ECE, EDD, EEAG, EH, EGC, EFE, GBL, and JO.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any comments, questions from board members?
I would like to thank you, Dr. Harding's, for discovering this redundancy in our policy book. It's good to have a few pages removed from that very large document.
I happened to be looking through, looking for a policy and found all of these policies that were identical, so I sent a note to the policy chair. Are there any other comments, questions, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? The motion carries seven to zero with the student concurring.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the Student Information System, RFP 2013-04. Mrs. Freeman.
Good afternoon, again, board members, Dr. Wilcox. Today, we're here for the presentation of the outcome of very exciting RFP. Under Dr. Wilcox's leadership, over the last six months or so, staff has been working diligently to pull together the RFP, to put out the request for proposal. We've spent an extensive amount of time interviewing four finalists with a large group of individuals representing different cross-sections of the staff here, the central office, and also at the school level. And then after selecting the finalists, we brought that group back for a four- or five-hour interview with a very large group of people to ask questions, to see the product demonstrated, those types of things. I think it was over 20-plus years ago that I can remember carpooling with a gentleman that was on the last selection committee that selected our current system that's obviously been updated many times, and how excited he was, as a counselor at that time, to be involved in this new student information system. I think this is about 28 years ago. And I can tell you, as a staff member, I'm excited about this new possibility of our student information system. For many years, we have kind of been doing some makeshift things with various grade books, electronic grade books, with a parent portal, with a system called Radiker to do high school scheduling. We do a lot of data analysis on our own and with a package called Performance Matters. With this new system that's being proposed and recommended to you today, all that will come under one umbrella, will be a seamless operation, and we're very excited about it. And Ms. Freeman's going to share a little bit about the base product and the purchase of that base product, two alternates that we have available to us at a very discounted price through next December that we're going to be evaluating as we go into the spring and as we start to implement the process, and also provide a little bit of information about hardware needs that we might have. Ms. Freeman?
Good afternoon. As Boyd mentioned, I am also very excited about this product, even though I don't have the opportunity to actually work with it, have in my interactions with some of the folks on the evaluation committee. I do recognize the importance of this enhancement to the school system, so I was pleased to be a part of the selection process. We received proposals in October. We had six companies who submitted proposals to the school system. The evaluation committee selected the four that they felt they wanted to learn more about that had better applicability to what the goals and objectives were for our organization. And we scheduled demonstrations of the software for a group that consisted of, there were about 12 to 14 core folks who actually voted and provided the written documentary support for the selection. And then we had others that were invited on invitation basis to come observe and provide feedback to the evaluation committee members. We got those proposals back in October, and we had had conversations with those four finalist companies on several occasions. I will tell you, trying to evaluate price and cost considerations for this particular RFP was particularly challenging, even for me who have been doing this for more than 20 years. It's kind of like trying to compare grapes, apples, and oranges. They all sort of are organized a little differently. Some of them have functionality that is not available in their core system, but is available in a module system. So it took a great deal of sort of investigating to try to come up with what I think is the most equitable comparison on a cost basis. And I would say that the company that's being recommended was not the lowest cost. They were, it's probably closer to the second lowest cost of the four finalist companies. They were ranked the highest by the evaluation committee members in the software demonstration, and they were also ranked the highest by the evaluation. and they were also ranked the highest by the Evaluation Committee members on the overall review of their technical submission to the committee. So, that said, we are pleased to be before you today presenting this recommendation that the Board move forward and accept the proposal from EduPoint Educational Systems of Mesa, Arizona. The initial cost includes $498,302 for the software license, implementation and training services, and there's some miscellaneous expenses that we are planning on having to pay for of about $64,132. And we know we're going to need to supplement that with some equipment purchases, some servers, which in the report are estimated at $104,301.90. When you look at the total cost of the contract for maintenance, service, and support, we're looking at a total commitment of the Board of Education for this procurement of $1,166,739.90. And that does include some estimated expenses. The, there are two items that we wanted to draw to your attention strictly for informational reasons today, because we aren't sure yet whether or not there will be things that we will want to move forward and purchase within the year. One of them is a toolkit that's offered by this company, EduPoint. It's their synergy technology, and it would provide some additional ability for editing and making modifications to the delivered software. The instructional technology folks prefer to wait. If we need that toolkit, we can purchase it later. It's not something that we would need in the first year, anyway. The second, and that cost would be $52,537, and then, there would be a recurring additional charge of $31,050 annually for ongoing support of that toolkit. The second alternate is for a third-party software that was offered to us as part of the VersaFit, excuse me, as part of EduPoint's proposal, and the product is called VersaFit. And it provides for the analytical tools that are used for instructional decision-making that impact the learning environment, and be similar to our Performance Matters contract. You're familiar with the services they provide us with. We are still on hold, trying to determine whether or not that's something that the school system will be needing to purchase, independent of the state of Maryland. The state is looking themselves at a similar, sort of a data warehouse management system for student data statewide, and so, we are setting a decision on that. Part of the EduPoint proposal aside, till we are sure what the state is going to be needing us to do relative to the management of our student data throughout the state of Maryland. If we were to move forward with either one of those alternates, the intention would be to come back to the Board, obviously, and ask for your approval to supplement the project budget, making those funds available to us. And again, we would have through December 31st in which to make that decision, based on the prices, the way they were submitted on the proposal. That said, do you have any questions about the proposal for me or for Mr. Michael here?
One clarification. We would not be asking you to supplement the project budget. The project budget was $1.5 million. We're significantly under that, and this costs over five years. What we would be asking you to do is authorize an extension of the purchase price, if in fact, we deem these tools are necessary.
Thank you. Yes, that's correct.
Is there a motion to approve RFP 2013-04?
Aye, so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions?
Mr. President, looking at, I'm not sure the page, Boyd and Lisa, my apologies, I think it's page six. It has the chart that shows some of the student educational platform. The Teacher View grade book, and you may have said this, and I apologize if I missed it. Have we piloted that software anywhere this year, or is this all new?
This will all be new.
It'll all be new.
It would be their own system from EduPoint. And we have used three or four different types of electronic grade books right now. But this grade book in particular, some of the questions asked by the principals, you know, can it be customized, different elementary, middle, high? Yes. Can it be standards-based, as well as letter grade, rubric-based, whatever? Yes. So, there's a lot of customization-type things. It is their grade book that integrates with everything else, their transcripts and all the other things. So, we'd want to put all that under one umbrella. I think those folks that have used the grade book will find it relatively easy, based on the demonstrations that we saw. For individuals who haven't used a grade book at all, you know, that'll be the first time they've been trained on a grade book. But it will be system-wide on the same grade book, totally integrated into the student information package, totally integrated into our parent portal, et cetera.
What, and would you explain to me, the lesson view? The master schedule will write, I know what that bad boy is, but the lesson view, what are the elements for that? Is it for individual teachers to throw their lesson plan online and into this system? Individual lesson plans, or is it, you know, a county-wide curriculum guide or something along? I mean, how is this going to work?
I'm going to invite Arnold and Bob to the table to help maybe respond to some of the questions. Lesson view, as I understand it, was a component to this, that you could upload and attach a variety of PDF and documents to a lesson. It has nothing to do with purchasing their curriculum or anything at all like that. It is just a mechanism for us to tie state standards, the really common core standards, to anything we might want to do to connect that. It was a means for teachers to post homework, a means to, you know, post lessons, lesson plans, assignments, those types of things. So, I just, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, because again, this was a big system. We've spent about 10 or 12 hours with it at this point, but I want to give you little fractions of it. But it was just their component of how all these pieces could connect. Just made it really exciting for how a student would check and maybe get the homework or get to an assignment, or information would be passed back and forth between the teacher and the student, from teachers to teachers, from teachers to parents, as well as lesson plans and things like that. So, it's kind of bigger than that, but it is not a curriculum that we're purchasing from EduPoint.
Is it, is it, and will there be some type of requirement that all teacher lessons be placed on, within the system? Or is it something that is a tool, per se, instead of a requirement? You know, what I'm thinking, you know, you're talking about teachers having to transfer over 180 days' worth of lessons. I mean, is that the intent, or is that just?
It's a tool. It's a tool. There are no decisions made of any kind, to my knowledge, Dr. Wilcox, but our expectations that would...
Thank you.
It's primarily a learning management system that the teachers can use as they choose, so that all their lessons can be electronic and tied directly to the objectives in the grade book and indicators of the curriculum.
Are there comments, questions, Mrs. Freeman?
A couple of questions. If we have a student information system, looking forward, will we be moving toward an employee information system so that we're basically, and would these be aligned? And is there the potential to have all of that come together in the future?
Well, as you may be aware, again, under Dr. Wilcox's leadership, we're already in the process of pulling together our business intelligence, RFP, kind of our back room, finance, purchasing, accounting, those types of things. A lot of these systems are open source, so it kind of gets out to the cloud somewhere, and you pull it down and pull it into a software. So, direct correlation or integration, I don't know. But the types of things that we would need to pull for teacher evaluation, some of the things we see going forward, definitely between the two sides of the house, we would make sure that any purchase that we make, this part is aligned to make that happen. We would make sure that another part would be aligned the same way.
Yeah, I think it's important that we not have silos, that we have everything that's able to talk to everyone else. So, the funding source, part of it came from the Race to the Top grant, and this may not be information you're going to have right this minute, Mr. South may. Where do we stand? What remains of the original grant money balance from Race to the Top? I know we're spending it as we go. Do we know what the balance remaining on that is?
The amount that was approved in year three for a student information system is a total of $284,000. That's $250,000 toward the purchasing of the software package and $34,000 toward contracted services of the implementation.
Right. Again, do we know what's left in that total grant of about $3 million, I think, was the original?
I think we'd have to defer to Chris, or probably he'd have to get that information. But this was specifically set aside in the grant for this technology purpose.
I just, again, my concern has always been that we did not receive enough original money to fund all of the requirements we're going to have going forward. So, I'm just sort of wanting to track where we are in that, and then, when we have to start finding some more funds. So, that was it. Thank you.
Dr. Harding's, Dr. Harding's.
Sure. Mr. Bailey?
Are there other systems in the state of Maryland using EduPoint?
There are not, and that was one of the things we explored as we looked at the various packages. We asked other systems about the system they were using, and we quizzed EduPoint, you know, pressed them hard. How would they accomplish the things that Maryland requires? But they have implemented this in numerous other states. They're familiar with Common Core. They're familiar with, as they've done statewide adoptions, like in Oregon. I believe they have a complete statewide adoption there. You know, aligning things with special ed forums and curriculum alignment and things like that, exporting, importing information to the state. Again, they don't see any problem with anything of that nature. Bob and Arnold both pressed them hard on all the technical issues, requirements that way, so we don't anticipate any problems, even though they would be the first in the state. We would be the first in the state with EduPoint. This really seems like a product that was recently designed and built from the ground up with specific K-12, pre-K-12 instruction, student management in mind. Not a system that's kind of been added and tweaked and changed and revamped or trying to catch up with Race to the Top. This, I mean, from all the systems that we looked at, this really seemed to have the components that were right on top, user-friendly, up-to-date with drop windows and the various things, and pull and drag and export right out. We were very, very pleased with the product. And with the expertise that was shared and with their training that they have proposed, completely built into this price, that they'll bring to the table and do direct training with a lot of our staff members. I don't know if anybody has anything else to add?
Fairfax County Schools, Fairfax County Schools is using EduPoint right now. And actually, Arnold got a reference and spoke with somebody there recently about, and they're very, very happy with EduPoint.
Pretty good-sized school system, you know. My other point would be, it's probably very easy to answer, is if you come in on Monday morning and something isn't working properly, what kind of turnaround time would you have before someone got in here and repaired the system?
Well, the system has automatic alerts for it, as many of our systems do now. It's also designed with redundancy, so there's double backups. So, they have one, it's very unlikely to have two units fail at the same time. So, it's a failover that the user never realizes that there's anything going on.
I think, Mr. Bailey, one other thing to note is it's a web-based application, so that the folk wouldn't actually have to be here on the ground to fix things. Beyond that, our project manager is from West Virginia for the installation period.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, my question was about the evaluation process, realizing that this is a system that can be accessed by parents and students. I was wondering if parents, realizing that staff members are also parents, if you had any students involved or parents, other than parents in the system who were participating either on the Evaluation Committee or as part of the demonstration, so you could get a feel for what they thought.
We did not, primarily because, you know, 99% of the purchase, while the parent portal is extremely important and the student access is extremely important, it's really the whole rest of the mechanism that was really the purchase. The parent portal, as we viewed it, was very user-friendly. You know, you could view it from your computer, your laptop, your iPad, your iPhone, or Android phone, which we were very excited to see. I mean, the administrators, teachers walking in the hallways would have access to various reports with mobile devices, but parents would have that as well. As you brought up, one, if you had three or four children registered in the school system, it was smart, and it knew they had other children. So, if you were going to check the grades of all your children, or attendance of all your children, or something like that, it had components that a parent could set it up that way and see those types of things. So, we didn't have students and parents come in to evaluate. That is a major decision-maker of the product, because, you know, our primary store, primary purpose was to purchase the right system, but obviously, we wanted to make sure it was parent-friendly, student-friendly, teacher-friendly, administrator-friendly, and again, we had everybody kind of look at it through that lens.
There were many parents in the room.
With students in the camp.
Thank you.
Is there any, Ms. Crable?
Okay, so, you've kind of touched on this a couple of times, but how exactly would students be interacting with the system? So, like, I'm out of school today to attend this wonderful board meeting, and I'm missing calculus. So, if my calculus teacher chose to post the lesson on this, with this software, could I then go home and get the lesson, or, I mean, how exactly is every, would students be interacting with it?
Student, there's the parent view, teacher view, and student view. And you would log in with your student view login credentials, and the classes that you are enrolled in would populate on when you logged in. The teacher would post, your teachers would post through Teacher View anything and everything they wanted you to see that was done in class today. And you would, as soon as you clicked on that teacher, you would have everything that they had posted for today's classes.
Okay, and is there some way to communicate within that software between students and teachers? So, like, message, IMing, email type of thing?
Yes. There's two-way communication between student view and teacher view, and also from teacher view to parent view.
Okay, right, thank you.
One of the interesting things is not only traditional media can be there, but also digital media, websites, and other things teachers can place there for their students to go to.
All right, I like that.
Including video files, excuse me.
Are there any other questions, comments?
Just one comment that some of the parents might like, is that you can literally set thresholds up so that you'll get an email message or a text message anytime your student is not in class where they're supposed to be pending attendance, and you'll get it in real time. As soon as the teacher takes attendance, you'll be notified. But even a step further, Amanda, you may like this, because you'll be able to brag a lot to your parents. Anytime you score above or below a certain threshold, text messages can be automatically generated to the parents. So, I, as a parent who want to know if my daughter passed her calculus test tomorrow, would know as soon as her teacher put the score in, I'd be alerted to that. So, we think this is going to be a great way to communicate with parents and with students.
Are there no more comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, and the student concurs. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is on-call asbestos abatement bid 2013-16. They've abandoned you, Ms. Freeman. You're on your own.
I'll just see what I know about asbestos abatement today. I was involved in the receipt of the proposals for this solicitation, and we were very pleased with the number of proposals we received. By approval of the recommendation, we will be able to move forward and establish a contract for as-needed on-call services that we could use in any building owned or operated by the school system. It's a one-year contract with options for renewal for up to three additional years. And the potential usage of the contract could arise at any time in performance of other repairs.
other repairs, such as removing or replacing a HVAC mechanical system, new windows being installed, or a type of a cosmetic upgrade. Sometimes it's hard to know when we have the asbestos until we get into a construction project. And that is one of the nice things about having this contract in place. It does provide for quick service when needed. These companies would be required under the contract to adhere, of course, to local, state, and federal regulations. Because it is a unit-price contract, the method of determining low bid involves some various methodologies of looking at the pricing. However, we are confident that the two recommended awardees, who we've identified in the report, are going to result in the lowest cost to the school system over the contract life for most of the types of projects that we anticipate that we'll be using this contract to perform. The contract period would be effective from January 1 through December, and again, with three additional one-year terms. The two companies that we're recommending today are Asbestos Specialists Incorporated of Elk Ridge, Maryland, and they have held this contract with the school system in the past. A company called Waco Incorporated of Mechanicsville, Maryland. We investigated their background, and they're confident as well that they can also perform satisfactorily. And we will be inviting them to provide sub-quotes when we do have projects that arise during the life of the contract and moving forward with whichever of the two can offer us the lowest total project cost on a project-for-project basis. Said, I'm here, do you have any questions about pricing? And I don't know. Mark is here as well. Do you have questions about asbestos abatement?
Is there a motion to approve bid 2013-16?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the on-call asbestos abatement bid number 2013-16.
Thank you, Mr. Breitman. Or is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Does anybody have comments, questions? Ms. Fisher?
Just one comment. I'm always amazed when I look at these, the bids that have come in from various companies, to see how much difference there is sometimes from one company to the next for the same service. It's mind-boggling to me.
I think sometimes a new bidder as well, who doesn't understand the pricing format, you know, can, the first time, if they haven't gone back, and that's why we post our bid tabulations, they haven't really gone back and looked at, you know, how it's going to be worked out in the field with the subquoting. They may be very conservative in their numbers the first time anyway. But most of these companies are used to this format. As I said, it's not that unusual to bid asbestos abatement in this form.
I mean, I'm just looking at one line and a high bid of $520 and a low bid of $67.50 for the same.
Location has something to do with it as well.
And that would be true.
When I looked at that.
Are there any other comments or questions? And the questions on the motion, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, with the student concurring.
Great. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is first-quarter budget adjustments for fiscal year 2013. Mr. South?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. I trust that you had an opportunity to review the document that was placed in your packet over the weekend that requested first-quarter fiscal 2013 budget adjustments for the Washington County Public Schools. I won't go through them line by line, but there are several of the larger items, larger dollar items, that I would like to go over with you in case there's any questions. First of all, I would call your attention to lines 10 and 11 and ask you to think back to the time that we accepted the bids on Bestrow Elementary School for the new facility over there. And the bids, as you recall, came in somewhat higher than what we had budgeted. At that time, the board directed staff to finalize or pull funding from various areas to effect the completion of that project. One of the areas that the board instructed staff to pull funding from was the budget in the maintenance of plant. The equipment budget in maintenance of plant, the number there was $1,141,000 over three-year period. The $380,333 that you see there is the first year of that three-year commitment. That's one-third of the $1,141,000. So, that would allow us to proceed with the Bestrow project for the current fiscal year. The reason for the transfer there is the fact that we need to move that money from the maintenance of plant category down to the capital outlay category where it can properly be spent. Next item I'd call your attention to is on line seven, where we're requesting an increase of $813,000 in the student health services. $738,000 of that is the remaining amount that we need to fund the school nurse program. As you'll recall, when we consummated our contract with Meritas, the amount was $2.7 million. We had, at that time, $2 million in the FY13 budget. And we indicated to the board at that time that we would move the remaining $700,000 and the actual number, $738,000, in a subsequent quarterly budget adjustment. And that's what we're doing there with the $738,000 of that $813,000. The remaining $75,000 there of the $813,000 is for the nursing software, the SNAP system, if you'll recall, when we went into the nursing business, if you will, last summer. There was a need for a student health software package, and that was a cost of $75,000. As we're talking about technology needs with that software package, I would go down to line nine, and you see there that we are reducing that budget by $1,075,000. When we began the budgeting process and went into the finalization of the budgeting process, we had committed $1,500,000 in that budget for technology upgrades. At that time, we didn't actually know what the various pieces were going to be. We've since discovered what some of those pieces are, and we're moving $1,075,000 out of the technology equipment line in operation of plant, where we had originally placed all of that million five, into three areas. The first one is the one I just mentioned, $75,000 for the SNAP system. A second area is the line two in administration, we're moving $800,000 into the data processing subcategory there for the Student Information System. And then the third area, it would be found on line four, where we're placing $200,000 in instructional software and mobile devices for students in the classroom. All of those three items adding up to the $1,075,000 that you find on line nine. Going back to line two, the remaining $152,000 on that line after we take out the $800,000 that we're moving into data processing, that remaining $152,000 relates to the MAP assessments, which was unbudgeted. We were unaware of that until after the budget was finalized, the FY13 budget was finalized. Last line, the last category that I would bring to your attention here today is on line three, mid-level administration, where you see we're asking for a reduction of nearly $841,000. Now, these are salary savings that we derived from positions that were eliminated in the reorganization and one position that has been vacant for half the year, that being the chief academic officer. So, we have a one-time save there on that salary. We also have several positions that were eliminated in the reorganization, a math supervisor, an ELA supervisor, the director of curriculum, which was vacated by the unfortunate passing of Dr. Harold, and the assistant director of elementary position, which was vacated due to the retirement of Ms. Burkhart. There's also five curriculum instruction specialists, excuse me, in that total, bringing that total to approximately $841,000. That brings us down to a net change in the fund balance of zero, and staff recommend, these adjustments have been feted through the finance committee, and they recommended bringing them to the full board. And with that, staff does recommend approval of these adjusted adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. South. Is there a motion to approve the first-quarter budget adjustments for fiscal year 2013?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the first-quarter budget adjustments as presented for fiscal year 2013 as presented by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Are there any questions or comments about the budget adjustments? Ms. Breitman?
On the third line category, mid-level administration, the salary savings, I want to be sure that when you say positions were eliminated, those FTEs do not, are no longer reflected in the budget?
The positions would, the positions are in the budget this year. We are booking the saves at this point. If the positions are not reauthorized sometime during the year or not filled sometime prior to the completion of the FY14 budget, then they would be eliminated from the '14 budget.
So, they are placeholders still in the budget?
What we're doing here is just reallocating the dollars. We have not eliminated the positions.
The word elimination in here, I thought, was confusing.
I apologize. The positions were eliminated in the reorganization, but we do not have the ability to eliminate the positions during the calendar, during the fiscal year. We only do that at budget time. But we do have the ability to reallocate the dollars.
Chris, I think in your explanation, you perhaps mixed a couple of positions because we've not had a discussion about Clyde Harrell's position that wasn't in that budget piece. So, I think that's maybe the only place where we have a...
But again, we're not doing anything for a future budget.
But I think for board members, they're thinking organizational chart and that we're eliminating it from the organizational chart. We're not eliminating Clyde's position from the chart. That's a decision that will be made later. But we are shifting the resources. Yes, we're moving the dollars.
We're eliminating the dollars in this budget.
Is that cleared up?
Sort of, kind of. Thank you.
Sort of, kind of. Well, let me try one more time because I think it's important that it is clear.
Good.
We are eliminating the dollars that would have supported those positions from this year and reallocating those dollars, but we have not eliminated from the position chart the possibility in a future year to reauthorize dollars to fill that position.
Perfect. That's what I thought. Thank you for that explanation.
I apologize.
And a final question, what is our unencumbered or unrestricted fund balance at this point?
At this point, it's approximately $10 million.
Okay. Thank you.
That was after the $1.5 million that we moved into the FY13 budget from, quote, prior year surplus, which is the same as saying moving it from fund balance.
Understood.
To support revenues in FY13.
Thank you.
And those dollars for FY13 were, in fact, for the software that we just purchased.
That's correct.
Are there any other questions or comments on the budget adjustments? If there are none, all those in favor of the budget adjustments? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. South. Next is Mr. Akers with the consideration of a gift to Washington County Technical High School for the amount of $7,862 from Davidson Beauty Supply. Mr. Akers?
Good afternoon, President Harding, board members, Dr. Wilcox. I am here on behalf of Washington County Public, or, excuse me, Washington County Technical High School to request permission to accept a very generous gift from Davidson Beauty Supply of $7,862 worth of cosmetic products. The products will be used to enhance the instructional program, and I would appreciate your consideration of accepting their gift.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. Is there a motion to approve the gift?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Breitman. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Are there any comments or questions about the gift? If not, the motion is on the approval of the gift. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, the student concurs, and please extend our thanks for their kindness to the Technical High School. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the 2013-2014 High School Program of Studies. So, I guess, Mr. Akers, you can stay where you are.
Yes, I will be asking your approval of our changes to the program of studies. But before I do that, I will go ahead and present to you what those changes are. Our basic timeline for our regular changes to the program of studies is, of course, driven by our scheduling process with students and at schools developing their master schedules. This is our timeline. You can see that we have met with the Curriculum Instruction Committee and shared our request for changes, and they have approved those and recommended that we take them to the board. You can also see that on December, which will actually be December 18, we'll be meeting with principals and counselors to explain those changes and also talk about the scheduling Most of this year's changes are driven by the implementation of the Common Core State curriculum, and that is the case with the courses that are being eliminated. If you look here, we are eliminating Studies in Composition, The Hero's Journey, Algebra I, and Honors Algebra I. This is also the case with the title changes, that they are driven by the adoption of the Common Core. So, you can see that English I is changing to English IX, right on down through the English, both honors and non-honors courses. The only exception is the very last one, Internship for Academy of Manufacturing and Engineering Technology. We are changing that to just Manufacturing Internship. That is both for accuracy but also brevity. It's kind of a long course name. We are adding some courses. The construction and design courses, of course, will be offered. It'll offer a little broader view of the construction trades than what we currently offer, and it will incorporate some STEM concepts in keeping with the Common Core. Additionally, the English and music courses will provide schools and students with additional options. You'd see the English option there that has not been available for some time, is the Honors English XII that will now be available. The addition of math courses that you see here is a direct result, for the most part, of the Common Core. of the Common Core. Finally, the addition of these Science and Social Studies courses allows schools to offer existing courses in different formats based on the school's schedule. So basically, schools will be able to offer, for example, AP Biology one period and offer AP Biology Lab another period. Typically, that will be on an A-day, B-day schedule, the lab period. So it'll be kind of more what most of us experience in college with a separate lab Are there any questions concerning the program of studies?
Is there a motion to approve the program of studies?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Rightnow. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments, questions from? Mrs. Hartman?
I just have one comment, and I would like to thank Mr. Akers for including Honors English XII, which has been missing for years. And as a former 12th grade English teacher, I felt there was a sincere need for it, so I am ecstatic to see it entered there. Thank you.
Mrs. Crable?
Would I be correct?
Mrs. Crable? Sorry, I didn't mean to...
Would I be correct in saying that most of these are more name changes than content changes? Like, like the sciences? Because I know now, like AP Chem, you take it for two semesters and it's two credits. So now you're just, I mean, like, would you be required to take the chem lab if you just want to take the class, or?
You would have to take both.
Okay.
That's why it's an option. The, the options that you've probably experienced are still there. Some schools can still offer 90 minutes all year. This just gives schools another option.
Okay, so it's more, that most of the content's still going to be the same. I understand the algebra, the Common Core algebra's going to be a little different, but for the most part, it's name changes as opposed to content changes?
Right. In the case of the AP Sciences, it, it does not change the curriculum at all.
Okay, and for English, the Hero's Journey curriculum would be completely changed compared to the English XII curriculum? I don't know. Miss Hartman knows that, doesn't she? I don't know.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Nine through 11, grades nine through 11, both levels, will include the Common Core curriculum.
Right.
There is no English XII Common Core curriculum, but once students have been taught on the Common Core curriculum, nine through 11, it would, they would be going backward to use the old, the courses that we're eliminating. So that's why we're going to have an honors level, English XII, available to them. Or, of course, AP will still be available also.
Okay. Thank you.
Another, Mr. Bailey?
The notation of the Manufacturing Academy, has that been added, or is that an ongoing? Had that ever been dropped? It was at Williamsport High School.
It, no, it's still there. That really is just a name change. And in, there is the inclusion of some STEM concepts that are probably enhanced, but that's primarily just a name change for the internship for that program. It's still there, and it'll still...
So the Manufacturing Academy will incorporate some of the STEM concepts?
Yes.
So that's probably a change in course content?
It, it is. I want to say that they were already there, but they're going to be enhanced.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to thank the staff for some of the charts, such as this one, that show the scope and sequence as students go through high school. I know for me, that's very helpful in understanding what, what courses put students on which directions as they, as they move through their high school careers. So I know it's something that our staff deals with every day, but for, for parents, I think, and students alike trying to select courses, it's very helpful.
Our subject supervisors do those and renew them each year, and I'm glad they're helpful.
And I know it's a moving target with the Common Core coming in, and so I appreciate the effort that was made to make it comprehensive. If there are no more comments or questions, the motion is for the approval of the 2013-2014 High School Program of Studies. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries seven to zero, and the student concurs.
Thank you. Mr. Akers, also in the book that was just... May I borrow this for one second? In this High School Program of Studies book that was distributed to the board members, I know it was draft pending their approval, but one of the issues is, in my letter, I referenced, there will be sample schedules. They don't appear in here. They will now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher.
Next item on the agenda is the appeal. I am seeking a motion to approve the opinion issued by the Washington County Board of Education in regard to case number 01-2012. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the opinion. Case number numbered 01-2012 is issued by the Washington County Board of Education.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Wilcox?
Yes, I would ask the team from Barbara Ingram to come forward. They have a presentation today that they're going to make to the Board of Education. Principal Thorston, if you'll make the introduction so that our board knows your executive director and the president of your foundation. Hi, Mimi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Congratulations.
President Harding, members of the Washington County Board of Education, Superintendent Wilcox, members of the senior staff. First of all, thank you for giving us this time to present on your agenda. I know it's a very long day for you, and I'll try to make it brief. As we prepare to graduate the first called Class at Barbara Ingram, it occurred to me that it might be prudent to provide current information and educate newly-elected members of the Board on the philosophy, policy, and processes that have been instituted in the last four years. The members of the Board received an invitation to an information session and tour of Barbara Ingram program on Tuesday, December 18th, at 11:00 a.m. Specifically, we would tour the campus building, University of Maryland classrooms, Barbara Ingram building, and the new cafeteria. And this would also be an opportunity to meet with the members of the Barbara Ingram Foundation. Commander Bill Alexander is here as the president of our foundation to support us today. I also have with us, I'm sure that you know, Mrs. Mimi Dickinson, the executive director of our foundation that works so hard on our behalf. Finally, as you know, the Barbara Ingram students perform in over 100 performances each year, and at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Dickinson to distribute to you a special golden pass, which will allow you and a companion to attend any of the Barbara Ingram performances that are sponsored by the school. And we hope that you will accept our invitation and join us on the 18th of December at Barbara Ingram.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Would you give my... All right, would you give mine to the student member, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Inside there, you'll see the package of holiday cards that our visual arts students...
Mimi, if you'd go to the microphone, because it's for TV.
Oh, I usually have a very loud voice. I apologize.
It's for TV, not for us.
Okay. Inside the packet, you'll see that we have some cards that our visual arts students did for us this year, as well as in collaboration with the Maryland Symphony Orchestra, and they were displayed at their latest production in November. Also inside is a golden ticket for you to please join us at any performance, and it admits you and a friend or a spouse to come. And we hope that you'll join us on the 18th, and I look forward to it at 11 o'clock. I know some of you have responded, and I look forward to hearing from all of you. Any questions? Congratulations. We wanted to welcome you.
Thank you. You know, one thing before you leave, Commander, I know you'll want to hear this as well. Today, the Board had the pleasure of having a legislative hearing down on the campus of the University of Maryland. We were in session, and your students came over, and I don't know that one of our board members even noticed that the young people came in, over 100 strong. They walked directly behind an open door in our classroom, but they were so polite, so respectful, although they went upstairs and didn't disturb anything at all. And again, my kudos to you for your leadership, Mike, in terms of great students, but also thank you, Commander, for your work in overseeing, stewardship of our foundation along with Mimi. It means a lot to all of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for any, any board members before... Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Thorston. Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Action. Mr. Marco, Dr. Marco, excuse me.
As discussed during closed session, I'm bringing forward personnel considerations for the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Is there a motion to approve the personnel actions?
Mr. President, so moved for the adoption of personnel action.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rightnow. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, the question is on the motion to approve the personnel actions. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven to zero, and the student abstains.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Dr. Marco, twice in a row. Next item on the agenda is a report on the long-term sustainability of a facility to house the Washington County Public Schools administrative offices. We have Mr. Harry Reynolds, Mark Mills presenting.
And Mr. Rollins.
And Mr. Rollins. You were hiding over there at the podium.
Hiding over here in the corner.
It's not often guys like us disappear, Rob, so...
Good afternoon, President Harding. Congratulations, Superintendent and members of the Board. As was stated, we're here to give a brief report in response to the Board's June 5th resolution on sustainability of a facility to house the school system's administrative offices. In that resolution, the Board put forth six scenarios that they requested to be studied, and we're going to go through them one by one. The first scenario was the renovation and continued maintenance of this existing facility as it is. Mr. Reynolds came in and did a thorough study of the building, reviewed some of our maintenance records, and took a good look at the building. Had the estimated cost to renovate just the square footage of this building at about $11.6 million. There are some limitations that go along with renovating this building. It's undersized for what we determined what our requirements would be, which would be around 75,000 square foot to allow for future growth. This building is around 66,000, not including the garages. We'd still have an inefficient floor plan. Some section of the building, of the building may not be viable for renovation. When you get into it, you do a rigorous study, you might find that there's some areas that you just can't renovate. And then any building operation that goes on in a phased manner while we're occupied is going to be disruptive to operations. Another scenario we were asked to study was the renovation of a subset of the existing facility. Again, Mr. Reynolds looked at this and proposed a $14 million project that would tear down the oldest section of the building, the 1938 section of the building where the superintendent's officer, officer housed. Well, sorry, Dr. Wilcox. And build in its place, that's about 10,000 square feet, build in its place a 19,000 square foot addition. That would then bring the facility up to a size that we would need to have for future growth and renovate the remaining 55,000 square foot. So although this option does allow for future growth, it does have the same limitations as the previous option, which would be the inefficient floor plan, some section of the building may not be viable for renovation, and again, disruptive to operations. The study also looked at other facilities in the Washington County Public Schools inventory. So there's three, the Former Job Development Center out near Smithburg. It's about a 16,000 square foot building. That site is on the side of a hill on a rural road. You couldn't really expand that building beyond what it is in any efficient or economical way. So I don't think that that's a viable option for the whole central office. The two schools that will be closing at the end of the 2015-2016 school year, Winter Street and Conica Jig, we also looked at those. The Winter Street, again, it's a 33,000 square foot building on a three-acre site. It'd be tough to get 75,000 square foot building on that with parking and the other amenities that we need with deliveries coming in and out and such on that site. Conica Jig has more land, but as we saw in the study of that school, we don't have public utilities out there. We'd have to look and see if zoning would allow a building of that type out there. And it's a small building on its own, so it wouldn't be suitable on its own to be able to fit the bill for a central office. Bester, in case that comes to mind, needs to be torn down to make way for drives and playfields for the ongoing projects that's over there. So really, there's nothing that we can salvage out of that building that would suit us. We also asked to look at existing facilities not owned by Washington County Public Schools. We contacted a commercial Realtor, McChay and Company. They identified two buildings that were of sufficient size within the county to house our central office. One is the former Allegheny Power Building out on Downsville Pike. It's a 136 square foot building, so it certainly has plenty of room. The Realtor estimated that the purchase price would be between four and six million, depending on the amount of land that we purchased with it. I think there were two options for 15 acres or 44 acres. But there are some issues with that building that aren't part of the study, and we really need to do a good feasibility study on that building to determine how much it would cost to then renovate that building, to bring it up to the standards we need for our offices. There are some old HVAC systems and things like that in that building that I'm aware of, but I'm sure there's more things that would need to be looked at in order to find out how much that would cost ultimately for a central office. The other building that was identified by the Realtor is the former Action Products Building on North Mulberry Street, sort of right in between Washington and Franklin Street on Mulberry. 78,000 square feet. Building is not for sale. Lease costs, according to Realtor, depending on whether you went with Class B, low-end Class B office space, or high-end Class A office space, would range between $400,000 to almost $2 million a year to lease it. And then there would also be a cost associated with, or embedded in the lease cost to fit the building out to our standards. Right now, I think it's, they've done a lot of envelope work on that building, but the inside would need to be renovated to our needs. The final two scenarios that were studied were new facilities. Mr. Reynolds came up with a cost between, well, Mr. Reynolds and us, we talked to some general contractors, some architects, to try to pin down what the cost of new commercial construction would be. Estimated cost between 13 and 16 million dollars for 75,000 square foot buildings, not including the cost of land. So it could be constructed onsite, which would negate the cost of land, or offsite on a site of our choice. The benefit of a new building, of course, is it allows you to build a building that meets exactly the needs of Washington County Public Schools. Finally, public-private partnerships. We recommend further study on this, consulting with various groups and partners in the community, developers, and we also know that the Greater Hagerstown Commission is doing a study of properties or areas in the downtown area that may be eligible for that sort of thing. And I think their study is coming out in a couple of months, and it would be good to take a look at that, see if any options there are viable. So with that, I just want you to consider this report as an overview or a starting point to this whole process. More rigorous study would be needed on any of these options before we move forward, and really, we look at this as a basis for further action by the Board. With that, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Are there questions? Mr. Rightnow?
Mr. President, Mr. Rollins, thank you. This is a very, Mr. Reynolds, thank you so much for taking your time and expertise in contributing to this. It's been, for as long as I can remember, you know, we've continuously heard about the central office and its issues. The one question I have, Rob, would be, do we have in place at this point in time something similar to our head specs? In other words, specifications as to what we need, what we would need, you know, what our minimum and perhaps even maximum need? Do you guys have that at this point in time?
We determined the space summary of the spaces we need. We went and asked each department within the Board of Ed. We went and asked each department within the Board of Ed, talked about what their needs were, and we put together a space summary. It's not a full-blown program. In other words, we didn't get down to the detail of what type of furniture would go in each office and things like that. You'd put in a full-blown education specification or, well, or building program, sorry. Didn't get into necessarily adjacencies and things like that. But we do have an overall program of the square footage that we require for each function. And yes, we do have that.
Does it have, does it include, for example, you know, the hard wiring and everything else that would go along with?
Doesn't get into the detail of...
Yeah, that would be the nuts and bolts.
Mainly square footage requirements.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Breitman?
I'm going to sort of mix the instructional side of the house with the facility side of the house. And looking at how we are starting to rethink how we deliver instruction with the digital mobility and technology and so forth, and wondering how that might apply to our support organization, the facilities, the IT, transportation, finance, and so forth. And Harry, I'm not sure how broad a discussion came up, and this may be beyond just the assessment of the facility itself, but I think we have an opportunity here to look how we divide those two sides of the house up and whether they can be housed separately. What are our bare square, bare minimum square footage needed for those particular departments? The idea of a centralized location versus more regional or decentralized. I know I'm throwing some things out here, but again, I look at our neighbors to the east and south. Frederick, who built a fairly large central office, and wondering how that has worked for them or not. And whether we should contemplate going down that path or develop our own path. So I know those are some broad, and I don't know if you had ever, as a group, looked at disaggregating the services that are now given through the central office.
Well, not in any detail. I can tell you from my experience that the ability to be close by and collaborate really helps. And we have, we did speak to our colleagues in Frederick County, and they're pleased with the building and have actually been able to bring some activities and business units together that were formerly separated. They said it helps them be a little bit more efficient. That's not to say that your ideas don't have merit. I'm just, my experience, we haven't done a study. It certainly could be part of any study we do moving forward as part of this whole process.
And again, when I see, and I won't labor this point here tonight or this afternoon, but it's, to me, I would like to see our instructional support staff out in the schools. I'd like to see, with digital mobility, it enhances their ability to be out among the students and the teachers and the principals and supporting the site base. So I'll just, I'll put that out. I do know there's a real need to come together in a meeting format and to bring people together. So I know there is a need for large, large space. So I just sort of throw that out. And then, to Dr. Harding's, I think before we leave the discussion today, hopefully, we might have an idea of what our next step might be.
Any other comments from, questions from other members?
I don't know if you would want to say something, do a little advertisement here about the video that is available to...
I was going to get to that after everybody else had the opportunity to speak. But one of the things that caught my eye as I looked through the binder here that you all prepared. I'm not sure I've been to every office in this building, but many of the pictures that were included, Mr. Reynolds, in what you did were very illuminating to me. Some of the pictures show conditions that you're not happy seeing in a building where we expect our employees to work. At least I wasn't happy. And it was, it reinforced that when I read the article this, on Sunday, in the Herald Mail and watched the accompanying video that talked about the layout of the building. If anybody has a chance, go on to the Herald Mail's, I'm advertising for you here, Julie. Go on, go on to the Herald Mail's webpage and watch that video, because it takes a video of what an employee, where an employee goes from the time they enter the front of the building to go and get fingerprinted if they're a new employee. And then it takes another video and starts in the Superintendent's Office, goes to the Public Information Office, then to the Chief Financial Officer's Office, and then back to the Superintendent's Office. When you watch that and see the tortured path, stairways, it does make you appreciate that the building is a maze. It wasn't built, designed for the purpose for which it's being used. So all that said, I first want to thank you, Mr. Reynolds, and just ask you, can you just summarize briefly what you think the status of this building is? I mean, that's really what I see as the great value that's come out of what you've done, is to help us understand, really, from the perspective of a professional, what the condition of this building is.
Well, to answer Donna's question, I didn't look at it from an operational standpoint, Donna. I strictly looked at it from a building standpoint, what you have to do to bring that building up to where it should be. In summary, of all the buildings that I've been in, that is one of the worst buildings that I think I've walked through.
Don't sugarcoat it, please.
From a maintenance standpoint, a constructability, and from an operation standpoint. I don't think you have any alternative but to abandon that building. As a taxpayer, I would not put a nickel into that building.
This building?
Well, this building, yeah.
We're here.
You have some major issues. You've done accessibility studies, which we included in the report. You have some hazardous material. You have some ventilation and then indoor air quality issues. Plus, your cost to maintain that building on an annual basis. We looked at the heating cost. You could save about $60,000 to $80,000 a year versus a building that's designed properly. I can go on here for an hour, but...
Well, I appreciate that, because it certainly brought home, to me, what seems apparent just to the non-professionally trained eye. And I think there is a consequence to the school system if we continue to ignore the needs of this facility. And I think, as we said when we originally passed this motion, we don't have to do anything. And I don't think that it's urgent that we do, well, I don't know that we have to do anything today, tomorrow, next week, next year. But I think it's a tremendous value to all of us in understanding, really, what it is we're dealing with in this facility. And that I think we can't be naive to it as we move forward. Now, what the right answer is at this point, I have, I have no idea. But I think we've at least identified that we have a problem that we need to be looking out, looking to address in the relatively midterm.
The building is not on the verge of collapse.
Right. Well, although, as I said, I was in here the day of that earthquake a year and a half ago, and I thought it was going to.
But it needs attention.
I would think, my only disagreement with Dr. Harding's is that, my fear is that the same thing happens as has happened probably in the eight years that I've been on the Board. Every time that this issue comes up, it becomes controversial and all of a sudden, we just say, well, it's our dump. You know, it's a dump, but it's ours. You know, if I heard that once, I've probably heard that a thousand times. At some point, something bad is going to happen. You know, you say it's not on the verge of collapse, but I still think there are areas of this building that are not healthy that, you know, if somebody gets a fur in their saddle, you know, calls OSHA and says, you know, I bet we have some mold or other issues in here, you know, we lose a quarter of the building, you know, to a federal regulator. You know, I think we've got to, you know, we've got the discussion started, and I applaud my colleague for bringing it forward a few months ago. I think now it's up to us to have some, you know, to be resolute that we're going to do something, that we're going to take some action and not just let this get shuffled, you know, under common core and everything else. You know, the people that work in this building have merit, or they wouldn't be here. They're needed, or they wouldn't be here. So, you know, they need to have working conditions that allow them to be as efficient as they possibly can be. It's no different than what we expect, you know, when we build a school. We build new schools, not just to build new schools, but to have efficiency and to allow our teachers and our administrators and our students to get the best quality they can get. So that's my soapbox for the afternoon. And I hope that as we move forward, that we take steps, even if they're baby steps, that we take steps to resolve the issues that we have here, one way or another. Thank you.
Well said.
Anybody else like to borrow Mr. Ridenhour's soapbox?
I won't get on his soapbox, but, Mr. Rollins, I understood you to say that Greater Hagerstown is not going to be prepared to say anything for several months. My understanding was that they may be able to say something in as few days. Is there any comment?
Well, I didn't want to hold them to an unrealistic schedule. I'm not sure exactly when they're going to report. They haven't told us, I don't believe, when they're reporting, but my understanding was it was at least a month away. If I'm mistaken, I...
Ms. Hartman?
I had one other comment that, I do believe that there should be a central office. I know that instructional personnel could and does spend a lot of time out in the other, in schools. But I feel that there should be someplace, one major business area where everyone knows that that's where the meetings are, that's where the people can be reached, and it's convenient for everyone. So I think those things need to be considered. So I would prefer to see a place where all the offices are together and all the people have access to each other.
Well, I think I'll suggest two things. First, first, I would invite other elected officials, members of the community. They would like to see the building, and I'm not saying just knock on the door and say, hey, I want to see the building. But if we could set up a mechanism whereby if commissioners or delegates or other members of the community wanted to see the condition of the building, I think that is probably worth doing. And perhaps the Superintendent can find a way to facilitate something of that sort. The, I think the second suggestion that I might make to my colleagues is maybe the next step is to develop a set of what do we need, what would we need? So that if there isn't an opportunity that were to ever come available, we know whether it fits or not. Whether that's a public-private partnership, whether it's us doing nothing, or whether it's an existing building. At this point, I don't, I don't think as a Board member have a good feel for what that set of specifications would look like. And I think maybe it's an opportunity for us as a Board to pursue some of what Ms. Breitman has, Mrs. Breitman has suggested about different ways that we might be able to use modern technologies to make, to create specifications that would reflect the modern workplace. So that's just an idea I'll suggest. I don't know that we need a motion or to make a decision right now, but I'm open to any comments anybody else has.
Is this something that might rise to the level of a work session or a workshop? Or do you see this as waiting to hear from Greater Hagerstown and then adding on to that, or...
Well, I'd sort of like to see us have our own set of what we need. And if Greater Hagerstown fits into that, or some other building does, that's a discussion for down the road. So maybe if we ask the Superintendent and staff to provide us as a Board with what work they've done, anything they might have provided to Greater Hagerstown or another organization regarding the needs for a central office facility. And if we have a chance to look at that, and then perhaps we come together for a work session or figure out what the next step is based on what those numbers are. I'll just throw that out.
So there are a couple of things that we will do. One, we will arrange and perhaps send an invitation for other elected officials and interested community members to see this facility. We'll do that on an ongoing basis. That's not something that we'll create tomorrow or the next day, but we'll make it available. We will also simultaneously be working on a set of documents that kind of mirror the ed specification process, but office space process, so that we can share that with the Board. If the Board then sees fit, sometime in maybe February, we will have a workshop session so you can talk about what you think we need, and we can share what we think we need and find some kind of middle ground that we go forward from there. By that time, we should have Greater Hagerstown recommendations. I also know that there are a number of interested private developers in the community that will probably want to sit in on that Board workshop and perhaps share some of their thinking about what makes sense in this community. So we'll make that invitation too. We've had a number of folks who've contacted us, and we'll provide that list as well.
If I may, Mr. President, I have one thing. I want to just take a moment to publicly thank Mr. Reynolds. He stepped forward when other people would not. He dedicated all, because they realized that, you know, this is not one of those situations that is a win-win in the community typically, in the eyes of many. Because anytime you talk about spending public tax dollars on administrative spaces, there are some who take great issue with that and take umbrage, quite honestly. And Harry stepped right into the breach of that and said he was willing to put his professional expertise out there for our use. And I want to thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds, not only for stepping up to help us, but for your long career of public service and also for your quality workmanship that's manifested around this community, where we see buildings that you have lent your expertise to. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Thank you, Mr. Rollins.
Mr. Rollins and Mr. Mills, you know I hold you in the same high esteem.
The next item on the agenda is a progress report on the development of educational specifications for West City Elementary School. Mr. Rollins, Mr. Warnock, Mr. Criswell.
When we had our workshops before, a couple of months ago, we said that we would report back periodically on the progress on the ed specs and all the way actually through the design of the, of the building. So this is a progress report then, a short progress report on the development of the ed specs and where we are today. Repeating the goal of our educational specification is to develop a program that meets the needs of the students, the staff, the community, now and in the future, but also make it so that, consider the program so that it will, can be constructed within the available resources that we have. So our progress to date, we formed a committee of 34 individuals, community members, teachers, educational support personnel, administrators. These are all, this is all in keeping with Board policy, which asks that we have citizens of all those stripes on the committee. We've held four committee meetings. I think Steve and Chad can attest that, and even the Superintendent, that we've had good, open, inclusive discussions spirited with people free to speak their opinions. And I think they've been really good meetings, and we've learned a lot from everyone. In those meetings, we reviewed previous ed specs to see what we could glean from them and what worked and what hasn't worked. We developed a, both a three-round and a five-round space summary. This school is going to be a three-round school in its initial construction, but we're putting a core space on it, proposing to put a core space on it for a five-round school. So we really needed to start with a five-round school and work back to a three-round. So we made sure that we were programming everything we needed, considering not just the school that was being built, but the future of the school if it was to be expanded. And we've provided minutes to the Board, and hopefully, core members have had a chance to read those minutes and reflect on them. General consensus coming out of those meetings and at the Board's work session. We wanted flexible, adaptable, multipurpose spaces. So what does that mean? To us, it means maybe in, at every grade level, having a pair of classrooms with a movable wall between them so that you can have a small group or a regular classroom or a larger group. It means, on some of the small instruction breakout spaces, you can have small rooms that could hold four or five students to work with a teacher or an individual student, but also pair those rooms up with a movable wall between them so that you can expand that space from a four-student space to a ten-student space. You could use that space for professional development. There's all sorts of uses of that. There's all sorts of uses of that. So, we're really trying to think ahead with all the spaces that we put in the building to have those kind of multipurpose usable spaces. Of course, the latest and expandable technology, that goes with making sure that we have the ability to have lots of wired and wireless technology in the building, and also places, I think we heard things like, make sure we have the ability to have plentiful power to be able to charge all the tablets and things that we're now using. And so, we're trying to build those kind of things into the, into the buildings and be very specific about that kind of stuff. Sustainable design, of course, we have to build a lead silver building, and it's just really the right thing to do, to make sure we build an energy-efficient, sustainable building, built from materials that are recyclable and that sort of thing. Adequate storage always comes up, the need for that. We've actually increased storage in this building from previous buildings. Took a good look at that, and, believe me, every administrator, Mr. Bailey being a former administrator, I know you always bring it up, was asking for more storage. So, we're making sure we put that in. Community use spaces, the gym, media center, cafeteria, available areas for after-school daycare offices, park and recs offices, separating that community area of the building away from the business of teaching in classrooms, and making sure that we can segregate the building in a way that allows functions to go on in both places at the same time without getting in the way we do. Always, we work with Mr. Ganley on the latest security features to make sure that we're building a safe school, and we're always looking at different ways of increasing security in a way that doesn't interrupt the school day. And finally, of course, we're planning for future expansion, and not only from a three to a five-round school, but to include if there was a need or a mandate to have all-day pre-K, we're going to make sure there's an area for a building pad to expand out and increase the number of pre-K classrooms. Just as we close, a reminder of the timeline, we're hoping to bring the educational specifications for approval to the board in January 2013. We'll then embark on acquiring an architect, and that design will go on between, for the rest of 2013 and into 2014. We bid mid-year to early fall in 2014, and open the school in the fall of 2016. So, with that, Mr. Criswell and Mr. Warnock are here for any questions the board might have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Questions? Comments?
First of all, I really appreciate having access to the minutes from the meetings. I think that's been a huge help, and we had, I think, a very productive discussion in the facilities committee this past time, so I do appreciate that, and I wanted to acknowledge it. Philosophically, do you, what difference do you see in the process this time from past ed specs process? Do you feel like we're, I'm not going to lead you, I'm just going to throw that question out. Do you feel this is, do you feel that the process has changed?
I think we're being a little more inclusive. I think having a work session with the board is very fruitful. I think the size of the committee has increased. I think in anything we've built, although this would be one, two, three, four, fifth elementary school, sixth elementary school we'll be building. And I think that you can rest on your laurels sometimes, so I think having a larger committee and bringing everything together, having the board's input, has been helpful, if we learn something, so it's a good thing.
Have you maybe spoken to colleagues in other school districts in Maryland or outside of Maryland that are attempting to sort of align technology and mobility and the new Common Core and so forth with facilities? Have you sort of reached out to see what other districts might be doing?
Well, Chad, I want to talk about your discussions with state, and also, I know we go to a couple of meetings a year with facility planners statewide.
We do hold those discussions. A lot of them actually go through, our area's representative, Ms. Jillian Storms, she's also on the committee. We actually have a meeting set up with her tomorrow, just to go through, to find out, is there anything we're missing? Are there any things that other LEAs are talking about or are looking into that we have not considered and that we might want to consider? Very rarely do we hear of anything, but you always ask, and it's always a good opportunity to find out if there is something that we're just not aware of. And then, as Mr. Rollins stated, we do attend the facility planner meetings, but I think they're bimonthly, and we'll go in and we'll look at new facilities, and we'll actually go through and tour the facilities. And as part of the meetings that we held for the ed spec, sometimes the best way to really understand is actually walk through and see it. So, we walk through, and it's kind of unfortunate, because we'll sit there and we'll kind of pick the schools apart and see the things that we don't like, but at the same time, you also see the things that you do like. And that's, I think that kind of gets to your question, is we are on the lookout for that technology and for that, those new designs or those new thoughts, but it ranges everything from technology and layout to security, to the bus loop, to the physical facilities outside. It's just trying to take in all the ideas that we see from different architects and school systems.
I also think one of the great opportunities for the committee was to actually tour one of the newer schools, and to actually talk to the staff that was there and say, you know, what do you really like, you know, about this school, and what things, you know, as a teacher or as, you know, whatever position you're in, would you think of changing, or, you know, if you had the perfect school, what would it look like? And so, I think the committee actually was able to then look at the new building, one of our new schools, and then ask those questions and be able to dialogue, and I think that was important. And although many of the teachers said it was a wonderful building, and they loved where they were, and they wouldn't change anything, there were some, you know, small comments of, you know, where they would place maybe the paper towel holder or things to make better access for students, and so that had us then as a committee thinking, you know, beyond just our normal thoughts of the building.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mrs. Harshman?
I have just one comment that you might carry back to the committee, and that is the picnic tables that are used in the cafeteria are the most horrendous things, I think, ever invented, and it's extremely difficult when you have any kind of meeting in any of the schools where those picnic tables are used for people to get into them and out of them, and in high schools especially, it could be rather a problem with modesty. So, I would like to see tables with chairs put in the schools from now on.
Okay, we'll bring that back to the committee.
I'm just very pleased to hear, to have heard Mr. Warnock's comments about the input from teachers in newer buildings. I know something as simple as the placement of the library's checkout desk in being able for the media specialist who's checking out books for students to be able to have view of the shelves and the students who are working in other parts of the library is important. And often, an architect or person designing that space wouldn't think that way. So, I'm just very pleased to know that you were getting the input from the teachers in the newer buildings. So, thank you for that.
Rob and Chad, one of the things that I would like to see going forward is, you know, we've gone through, I think, a wonderfully inclusive ed spec process, but now we are to perhaps take a look at somebody who lives in the world of design, and perhaps ask them to take a look at our functional plans, to see if we couldn't make a facility that is more aesthetically pleasing, but also it's a facility that lends itself to how humans actually interact in a workspace. So, it just might be time for that next level of kind of review. Now, again, I know that cost drives a lot of what we do, and that a designer may take us into the stratosphere in terms of cost, but I also think that there are some designers who can offer some thoughts about the way humans interact in a space that we may not have thought of, because our experience, in many ways, is what constrains us. That may be a good thing, but it also may somewhat be limiting. So, I would encourage us, you know, before we present again to the board, to at least reach out, reach, to reach out, see if there isn't somebody who is a facilities designer, not an architect, not an engineer, but a designer, who want to take a look at this. And, you know, I've had a couple of wise board members who've coached me on that, but I'd appreciate if you could do that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is board member committee reports. Ms. Crable?
We have a Washington County Association of Student Council's meeting tomorrow. It is at Tech High in the auditorium. It's from approximately 9:30 to 1:00. I will not be able to attend, but I, as always, invite everyone here to attend. Like I've told you before, students really like meeting you, knowing who's making the policies behind what they have to do. It's a quasi-environmental theme. There's a little bit of mixed up going on, and it's our more community service-oriented meeting.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Harshman?
The curriculum and instruction committee did not meet since the last board meeting, so that will not happen until, I guess, January.
Okay. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy committee met on November 27th, after a discussion of proposed amendments to policy IKA, which is a grading system in high schools and middle schools. We've scheduled a first read for January to allow a little bit more time for administrators and teachers to consider the changes and their impact. The committee is also sending policy DL, if you recall, which is the retirement investment committee, back to the finance committee for some language describing the actual procedures that occur to be added to that policy, and again, to allow time for communication with CBIZ and Great West to occur on that also. FEI, of course, we discussed, and that was taken care of earlier in this meeting. And finally, we reviewed the accomplishment of the committee over the past year, and we actually reviewed 32 policies this year. Five of those were brand-new policies. We updated 16 of those policies and rescinded 11. We dealt with seven administrative regulations. We adopted two brand-new regulations, updated four, and rescinded one. And we dealt with 14 exhibits. Of these, we adopted one brand-new exhibit and updated 13. The policies that stand out, I think, the most in my mind this year, that took an awful lot of work from staff, and I thank the staff for that, as well as the committee, were those that had to do with the ethics policies, with concussions, and with the heat acclimation policies that were sent down by the state.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President, the HR committee has not met in the month of November. Of course, we're not meeting in December, but look forward to meeting with the new HR director in January.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Brightman?
Facilities met on November 27th. We had an update on the Bestre Elementary School. The geothermal wells are moving forward. We spoke about collegiate acres and an APFO review. As I stated earlier, during the West City Elementary School discussion, we had an in-depth discussion on the minutes, and that was a very productive conversation. I also brought up, I had attended the CAC meeting last week, two weeks ago, and at that time, a representative from Rockland brought up a concern with traffic issues at the intersection of Sharpsburg Pike and the road going back to Rockland, so I did bring that to staff's attention. There will be no meeting in December due to the reorganization of committees, and the assumption will be that committees will start back again in January. Thank you.
The finance committee met November 27th as well, and we just spent most of our time discussing the third quarter, or first quarter budget adjustments, which were on the agenda earlier today. For the information of all board members, I will make sure to get the form to request committee assignments into your mailboxes. They may already be up there. A couple of things. Number one, we have 15 slots for committee members. There are seven of us, which means to fill all committees, somebody would have to serve on three committees. If anybody is interested in doing that, please, please let me know, because we need somebody to pull triple duty, if you will. Furthermore, since there are five committees and there are seven board members, if anybody does not want to be a chair of a committee, please let me know. I will not chair a committee, of course, but if any other members don't want to chair a committee, I'd rather know that upfront and try to work around that as well. Future agenda items and future agenda items list. Mr. President, I wasn't at the agenda planning meeting today, so if there is anything that needs to be updated...
There was, there was one adjustment made. The two meetings that originally had been scheduled in January for the 8th and the 22nd have been consolidated, and they will be held, or the meeting will be held January 15th. It's a day meeting, will be a day meeting. And there were no additional, I don't believe, Mr. Michael.
Everything on the 8th moved to the 15th.
Yeah, everything from the 8th was moved to the 15th.
Two items have now, for a community, the Meritas Health Initiative that the school board has initiated, will be a midterm report of that. In addition to that, a companion report by the Teen Pregnancy Coalition will accompany that along with some recommendations that they are going to forward to the board.
Great, thank you. Final item on the agenda is board member comments. Ms. Crable?
I would just like to welcome our newest board member, Melissa Williams, and I am anxious to have her assist us with educational information that I know she is overflowing with, and I think she will be a great asset to the board, so welcome, Melissa.
Mrs. Williams?
I'd like to thank Washington County Public Schools for the opportunity to attend the MAB new board member training. I attended on November 29th and 30th, and then I was able to also attend a training on the Open Meetings Act on December 7th, so I thank you for the opportunity to do that. I'd like to thank Mr. Gene Ebersole for the invitation to judge the We the People contest coming up on December 18th. It's been a long time since I've judged anything, and I'm eager to participate, and I welcome that opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Ridenhour?
I'd like to thank, I didn't get the opportunity, or didn't take the opportunity, thank the foundation from Barbara Ingram for the gift. I will say that I won't use the gold card. Something in my mind about, I think it's appropriate that I pave my way into those events, because, you know, typically every dollar we take out with free passes are dollars that the kids don't get for those programs, and they do cost them money. So, I hope that once you've been to a few of these and other activities around the county, because there are some exceptional events that kids put on, you'll see the merit of coming to them and contributing anything that you might have available, because it really does help them continue their performances.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour, and Mrs. Fisher.
Just congratulations again to our newly-elected president and vice president. This is our only meeting this month, and we'll be seeing each, everyone again in January. I hope everyone has good holiday and comes back ready to take the bull by the horns and get some work done.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President, I was so absorbed with the last meeting and the comments talking about sports that I failed to mention the fact that I also attended the Clear Spring Veterans Day along with you and other elected officials, and would echo the same sentiment that you did, that that is a model situation, a model program, and a student body that is very, very respectful and committed to the purpose for which they are there. I too wish everyone extremely happy holidays and the very best in the coming new year.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mrs. Brightman?
Mrs. Williams, I also want to congratulate her and look forward to working with her. I remember her as a student.
Of course you do.
Go ahead, Mrs. Brightman.
Go ahead, Mrs. Brightman.
As several have said, I'd like to welcome our newest board member, Mrs. Williams. I'm sure it's going to be a pleasure to serve with you, and would also like to congratulate the new board officers, and I'm sure we'll all work together as we move forward through some interesting challenges with the budget and collective bargaining in the general assembly starting up here shortly. There will certainly be a lot of, a lot of interesting issues for all of us to work together with.
Thank you, Mrs. Brightman. I too want to welcome Mrs. Williams. I didn't know you really at all before the campaign, but as I, as I said last week, it was obvious going through the campaign, your commitment to those students among us who face the most challenges. And I hope you won't be shy about speaking on their behalf and bringing that forth as, as we go through the next year. I enjoyed the campaign with you, and I'm thrilled that you're, that you're a colleague. So welcome. To all of my colleagues as well, it is my intention and my goal to serve all of you. I hope that any of you will not hesitate to let me know if you think that there is a way that I can do that more effectively for you or for the board as a whole. There is no further business before the board, therefore, I will announce when the rebroadcasts are. First, there's a rebroadcast of this meeting on Channel 99 at 6:00 PM on December 13th, another rebroadcast on December 15th. And as previously mentioned, there will only be one board meeting in the month of January, and that meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 15th at 1:00 in the auditorium. Thank you all. This meeting's adjourned.